We got it. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have a special guest with us tonight. Being here. Appreciate all you do. If you'll give us just a minute, we've got a few things to close. We need to take care of it, then we'll get into the regular meeting. I have a motion to.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Shields.
Present.
Mr. Dawes.
Here. Okay, I have a motion to reconvene certified closed action on.
I make that motion.
Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yeah.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes, I have some clothes please first.
Case A is to continue exposure, continuing edge exposure to be determined by the five oh four plan committee. So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
Motion to change school board policy GBO dash PC retirement to allow. Nancy Labett to retire under the early retirement incentive program effective December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yeah.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
Motion to approve personnel changes for November eleventh, twenty twenty five as presented and discussed.
The move. Second. Motion second discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
Motion to approve the dismissal of two classified staff members as discussed.
Have a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. Is that it? Okay, again, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Seems like half of the year is getting close to being gone, moving fast. There's holidays coming up. We do appreciate everybody being here tonight. Well, get into our open part now. Do we have any additions to the agenda, Mr. Mayhew?
No, sir.
So I have a motion to approve agenda as is.
So moved.
I'm moving to second, roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson. Mr. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. I'm moving to second on the consent agenda, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson. Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yeah.
Mr. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. And we'll move on to our presentations. First, Dr. Nellie, have anybody recognized new employees?
We do have at least one new employee. Any other new employees? Miss Taylor, would you like to stand? She is going to be teaching math at Dan River High School.
Congratulations.
Welcome back to Dan River.
That's right.
Pennsylvania County.
Thank you, glad you could be here. Next, we have a presentation from our state senate town. Volcha, you want to come to the podium?
I'll get the bring the one presented too, will you?
You can. I'm sure everybody knows Dr. Jessica Jones by name. It's good to see you back. We're doing good.
Fantastic. So I have a senate resolution for Dr. Jessica M. Jones tonight, and she is. Okay, we go, every time we see each other, we cry because she is definitely one of Senator Ruff's favorite people on earth. And, oh Lord, this is what happens. We start taking talk about Frank and we both get to crying, but. When I first took this, took this on to run for this position, he told me there's one very important task I want you to take. Make sure you take care of, and here's what we're here doing tonight, is he wants to make sure that Dr. Jones got recognized because. He thought the entire world of you. And I know the feeling was mutual and you don't have to say anything. So tonight, we have, this has been a long time coming. We've been trying to get together to do this for a very long time. I've had conflicts and, but I'm going to read this resolution that is very befitting for Dr. Jones. This was agreed to on February sixth, twenty twenty five. Whereas Dr. Jessica M. Jones, a champion for Virginia's agricultural sector, has served the Commonwealth as a teacher, a member of the state milk commission, and a leader in several other organizations. Related to agriculture and education, including the National Association of Agricultural Educators and the Association for Career and Technical Education. As well as their Virginia chapters and the Delta Kappa Gamma Society International. And Jessica Jones began her career as an agricultural education and environmental science teacher and future Farmers of America advisor in Campbell County Public Schools. She subsequently joined Pennsylvania County Public Schools as a faculty member at Chatham Middle School and currently works at Tunstall High School. And Jessica Jones is also the coach and lead mentor for Tunstall High Schools. For inspirational and recognition of science and technology robotics team and a professor of agribusiness communications and leadership. At the University of Mount Olive in North Carolina. And Jessica Jones provides her leadership and expertise to the county, the president of the Pennsylvania Educational Association. Vice President of the Virginia Educational Association and serves as Chair of the Advisory Board on Teacher Education and Licensor. Which advises the Virginia Board of Education on policies applicable for the qualifications examination and licensure of public school personnel. And in two thousand eleven, Jessica Jones was appointed by Governor Bob McDonnell to the State Milk Commission and the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. She served in that capacity until twenty eighteen, then was reappointed by Governor Glenn Youngkin in twenty twenty two. And as a member of the State Milk Commission, Jessica Jones has overseen the issuance of licenses to. Processors and distributor distributors, distributors, my goodness. I'm getting ready to get really tired because you, I thought I did a lot. You're making me kind of exhausted here and I'm not even close to being finished. All right, let's try that again. You have overseen the issuance of licenses to processors and distrib. Distrib.
Distributors.
Distributors. Distributors, then you mess you up. Of fluid mule products and helped ensure that Virginians have a consistent, available, and reasonably priced supply of milk. And among many awards and accolades, Jessica Jones has selected as the, was selected as the distinguished Farm Bureau Woman of the Virginia. At the Virginia Farm Bureau Federation Women's Leadership Conference in twenty twenty four. It was named the National Teacher Mentor of the Year at the National Association of Agriculture Educators Convention in twenty twenty four. And through the contributions as an educator and a trusted expert in her field, Jessica Jones has helped strengthen the Commonwealth's agriculture. And education sectors for years to come, now therefore be it. Resolved by the Senate of Virginia that Dr. Jessica M. Jones hereby be commended for her legacy. Of service as an educator and an advocate for the Commonwealth's agriculture industry. And be resolved further that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to you. As an expression of the Senate of Virginia's admiration for your personal and professional achievement. Congratulations, thank you for all you done.
The one that took so long.
It sure did. We good? All right.
Congratulations.
And thank you on behalf of Frank. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We miss Mr. Ruff too. He was a real champion for our school system.
Yes, sir. I wish I could call him about every day and ask him something.
He always came when we asked, he really did. Okay, next, we have a request to address the board, Mr. Martin Fisher, Mr. Tom, I think I say y'all, Mr. Fisher, how you doing today?
Doing good. So, hi there. Long time no see. Thanks for your service to our county. Briefly, we have a new government coming to Richmond. And we must be prepared as a local government for any possible encroachments on our rights as we should be so concerned. Whenever there is a drastic change to government at any level. Regarding education issues, I hope this board will move quickly to assess our county's scholastic position. On matters of equality, especially matters of religiously embraced philosophical beliefs. And how we have different beliefs from one another. We must be prepared against any new government in Richmond that may aggressively pursue. Any form of orthodoxy that would be set as superior to other beliefs. The beliefs of others who find perhaps such orthodoxy to be even abhorrent. I find transgender beliefs to be abhorrent, as do many others among my friends and neighbors. Please affirm our equality with these opposite beliefs. Remember, in free society, no one is obligated to play along with the delusional sexual charades of these sexually disoriented people. We as Americans may reject such transgender orthodoxy. We may wish these adherents good luck with all those imaginary genders. And we can be neighborly and while we reasonably observe only two genders that engender future generations. And as a matter of religiously embraced belief, these. We thank God for creating these male and female. Will you look into this with all dispatch, please? I believe this is a grave concern regarding the incoming government and their toxic desire to push this religiosity of transgenderism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next is our character word of the month, Ms. Taylor.
High school.
Good evening.
Good evening Chairman Dawes, Mr. Mayhew, school board members, and all those present today at tonight's meeting. My name is Vivian Taylor and the character word for the month of November is respect. Respect is a feeling of deep admiration for someone or something elicited by their abilities, qualities, or achievements. Like appreciation, respect is woven all throughout our daily lives. It allows us to build trust and relationships, improve communication, and foster a more positive environment. Respect is a component of social harmony that entails being kind to others and involves recognizing the inherent value and dignity of others, including yourself. A few small but mighty examples of respect are holding the door open for others, saying please and thank you, and being an active listener in conversations. Two other ways to demonstrate your respect for others are simply by showing your gratitude and being polite in your interactions with other people. In my eyes, respect is earned and given, but everyone is entitled to a base amount of respect, no matter who they are. Respect relates to me as a person through my actions because I always try to be polite and show my gratitude and give respect to others when it is due. We should all try to respect others when we can, even if it's through something small. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is usually the PEA, but Mr. Hill submitted that he will not make it tonight. Don't think anybody else is clear for PEA ranks. Do we have anyone signed up for public presentations? Somebody's on the sheet? Where any names? Two, okay. You call it first, please.
Mr. James Sheffield.
How are you this evening?
I'm very well, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayhew and all school board members. I hope that I can speak as well as Ms. Taylor just did. I'm the product of Pennsylvania County Schools and I'm the parent of two students that are currently enrolled in Pennsylvania County Schools. And I'm here to request that the board fund and hire four new band instructors. For each high school, middle school location for the twenty six, twenty seven school year. Currently, the band instructors teach both middle, the middle school and high school. My kids being part of the Chatham district, I know that our band instructor is teaching four courses at the middle school and one at the high school. So what that leads to as students at the high school level, not being able to take band. As in it is only offered one block each semester. There are passionate marching band participants that can't participate in a band course. There are students that are choosing between obtaining an advanced diploma and taking marching band. So again, I ask that the board fund and hire four new band instructor positions for the twenty six, twenty seven school year. I appreciate your time this evening.
Sir, thank you. All right, next.
Leslie Hatcher. Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to anyone here that's a veteran tonight. We appreciate your service. Thank you very much. Mr. Henderson, I saw your picture. You are a very attractive young man. Mr. Mayhew. I even changed him out today, Mr. Dawes. Mr. Mayhew, Chairman Dawes, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here as a member of Chatham Band Parents Association, and I am joined by several other parents, not just from Chatham, but I also have parents that are here from Tunstall. We'd like to, I would like to address the board concerning a proposal for positions to be created for separate band directors at our middle schools and our high schools. My name is Leslie Hatcher and to my students, I am Mrs. Hatcher. To my band kids, I am Mama Hatch. My child has been a member of concert band since sixth grade and marching band since seventh, marching with the color guard and brass section. He is a current freshman at Chatham High School. It has come to my attention that there is an obvious need for a permanent music or band director at our high schools. And a separate middle school band director at our middle schools. The marching band and concert band program at both Chatham schools have grown exponentially since our band director came in twenty twenty two. For example, in twenty twenty two, for all three grades at Chatham Middle, our director had fifty four students total. Today, he has ninety eight. With his high school students included, our band program has close to one hundred and fifty students and that is growing. Today. Excuse me, I have looked at the administrative and teaching responsibilities for the middle school band director alone, and those duties combined with managing. An award-winning active marching and concert band at the high school are a lot for one person. There are many late evening practices, weekend events, and our music program is a year-round program. Many people only see the marching band, but there are many students that are extremely talented that participate in concert band outside of the marching season. Our director's daily schedule on paper allows him two forty-five minute planning periods which are not consecutive. One of those planning periods includes traveling from one school to another. He also has a thirty minute lunch break, which he sometimes uses to work with students to prepare for concert assessments, all district auditions, or concert music. His schedule simply does not allow him to have the full ninety minute planning period other teachers are given all at one time. Chatham's director came to Pennsylvania County Schools in twenty twenty two. In the spring of twenty twenty three, our concert began, our concert band began showing the talent and confidence within our students as we received our first superior rating. At the VB ODA District Six Concert Assessment, which is the highest scoring you can receive. Last year, both Chatham Middle and Chatham High Bands became Virginia honor bands. To earn that title, bands had to achieve superior ratings at marching band and concert band assessments. Our high school has been an honor band for two years in a row, and it is no small feat to receive such high ratings, especially at a middle school band level. Having a music teacher, band director at the high school full-time is a personal matter for my husband and I also. Our son plans to pursue a future in writing and performing music, color guard choreography, marching band drill writing, and instructing and teaching music. He and all the current and future students who plan to pursue music in their futures deserve to have an instructor at their school to teach advanced music classes such as music theory and percussion techniques. Chatham's band director possesses not only a bachelor's degree of music education, but also a master's degree in arts and education curriculum and instruction degree. He has the ability to write the curriculum for these classes to help our students become better musicians. Our director is an asset to our program and retaining him may become an issue in the near future if we continue to grow and he tries to run both programs consecutively. As a parent and as someone who has worked in our band program, I can say with absolute certainty that we could not afford to lose it. I have a unique perspective insight into the band program. I've worked for Pennsylvania County Schools for five years in the classroom as a substitute teacher and a teacher's aide. And with our band program at Chatham as a color guard coach and assistant band director. I've gotten to know our students inside the classrooms and then I've had the privilege to get to see them in their element, in their safe place. Where their confidence explodes and they are talkative and they're excited because they're proud of themselves for what they're accomplishing. I've been lucky to see their talents and their victories, both on and off the field and stage. The environment that we have has shaped our programs and allows our students to grow into their talents and feel pride in their accomplishments by also giving students a place to feel at home. Our band programs are producing successful young adults who are furthering their education and chasing their dreams in the music room. We cannot deny the fact that our music and band students deserve to have teachers at both schools that can mold them and help improve their talents. Other counties that surround us support their music program and provide support at both levels of education. Our middle school students would benefit from having their own band instructor by having more time to hold individual practice, after-school practices. And one instructor focusing just on a middle school program could spend more time planning the middle school program more exclusively. The size of the middle school band at Chatham Middle is growing quickly and becoming increasingly harder and harder to plan for. And meet the needs of two very different skilled bands. At the middle school level, in fact, each grade is at a different skill level. In closing, I'm here to propose Pennsylvania County Schools create separate band director positions for all middle schools and high schools. I also encourage each member to speak to your directors, ask them what they do on a daily basis. Ask them what their struggles are and how much time they really have to plan for each school and each program. And ask them how they feel their needs can be met. Also, students can provide excellent insight on what their needs are, specifically related to classes being offered and opportunities to take music or band classes that count towards their diplomas of choice. Before the end of twenty twenty five, I plan to present each of you a proposal that goes deeper into explanation. With the needs of our directors and students and changes that can be made to benefit everyone involved in our active band and music programs across our beautiful county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me say this, I just.
Yes, sir.
Heard your band first a couple of weeks ago to Dan River Classics or whatever ones.
Oh, yes, sir.
Today, they are epic, they're just. They're playing like they're in college or something like that, so you got a lot to be proud of with your music program.
Pennsylvania County has a lot to be proud of. There's a, Pennsylvania County has a lot to be proud of. All of our bands.
They do.
Are extremely talented.
They really do.
We have some really, we are very, very blessed to have such excellent instructors. We just need to make sure that we retain them and we are meeting their needs also.
Thank you for coming tonight presenting that, you too, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Anybody have any question on the five desk reports? Now I'm gonna move on to the superintendent. Mr. Mayhew.
Okay.
I made you back away. No.
Good evening, Chairman Dawes, school members, everyone present. It's like we got a full crowd. I've got some students from, I think, from class correct, at least four or five later. First of all, I'd like to begin with, on behalf of Pennsylvania County Schools, we'd like to take this opportunity to express our professional gratitude to all the men and women who have served in the military. It's very fortunate that paid to dedicate themselves to protect the freedoms that we cherish here today. Many of our schools include programs, assemblies, and parades honoring our veterans. I went to several on Monday and then of course today, we had a very special engagement at Chatham High School that was very good. Very proud of our veterans. If there are any veterans in the ring, we'd love for you to please stand and be acknowledged. I know there's some here, I know at least two.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I also like to congratulate Dr. Jessica Jones on your acknowledgement here today. Very nice. Appreciate the hard work that you do. Senator Volcha, thank you for being here. I know it was difficult to get the schedule figured out, but we're glad that you took the time to come. It was very, it meant a lot to Dr. Jones and so forth, and of course, to Pennsylvania County. Like, I have quite a few slides and I'm gonna try to go through them quickly, but I'd just like to share the good news. Since a month, we've had a lot of things that have taken place and folks, things, I like to just make sure that you're aware of things. So Hurt Elementary School, they held a very special Veterans Day program on November seventh. Very nice program with a message from students and a guest speaker. Also, Twin Springs held one today. I was not able to get pictures and get them on slideshow for Chatham High School, but there was a very, every, every single program was very different. And Chatham High School particularly had one, there was an engagement period, which I, I put a message out to all our employees. It's so important for our employees off their mind, you know, to be able to talk with students about what it is to be a veteran and what, what kind of things and sacrifices. That veterans had to take, had to go through and so forth that we do with freedom have. that we enjoy with the freedom we have. And today at Chatham High School, I witnessed, you know, you had veterans on the stage and they had the opportunity to engage with students, which was very nice and folks, and I think they asked a lot of questions of you all today. And Mr. Fitzgerald did a very nice job with your presentation, because we really appreciate the work that was done and, of course, the music performance, home reading that was done. Recently, that's one of our bands right there, Dan River High School, was invited to the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the Pan Express in Dable, so it was very nice they got to do that and they played a very nice little program. Technology Education, Chatham High School, Gretna High School created, I don't know if I pronounced it correctly, I think it's called Tents, Tents, Tents Grid T Project. Am I pronouncing that right? Dr. Jones, you may know this better than me, but I know they are. Listening to me is these, these things they may appear to be floating off the floor. Okay, so, okay, I think I spelled wrong. This was, this was Mr. Hicks's classroom. Red Ribbon Week was recent and we had Thomas Middle School beta members that were creating some events and so forth, and also Chatham Middle School was also promoting drug-free education and pledge to be bully-free. Ag students that, that's Chatham Middle School right there. Ag students recently building donated twelve wooden benches to the Diamond Fever Youth Facility. These, the students built these and they also constructed table benches for the Dable Pennsylvania Cancer Society with their annual, so hard work with the students there at Dan River High School. Recently, the Career Connections Lab, we have four of those at all our middle schools, but the Gretna Middle School Lab under the direction of Mr. and Ms. Christie Shelton was featured in the Go Tech marketing campaign by Parker Productions. So you see Dr. Tachus and you see Ms. Shelton to the bottom left. Students did an excellent job, just watching them go through those, those particular areas and be filmed, and so did a very, very nice job. Just recently, on Tuesday, October twenty-first, the English Language Learners held a family night at Chatham High School. It was a wonderful event highlighting the accomplishments of students who successfully met and exceeded their respective goals and some who exited the program because their performance had met that opportunity. There were so many smiles from students, staff and parents and the L's, teachers and Mr. Todd Cease, who oversees that program, and a meal was served, but it's a very, very nice program at Chatham High School. So interestingly now, this is the Chatham High School, different groups that were painting snowplows. So, you know, recently, we thought we might need to use those this morning. I got a lot of calls wanting we're gonna be on two hour today. Dr. Moon and I, Dr. Moon and our staff were physically out at three o'clock in the morning, checking roads to make sure we were here on time. A little bit less energy than we were gonna make, but nonetheless, they did a very nice job. I think it's in the direction of the art teacher, it was Durham there. Recently, Twin Springs had an indoor drive-in for Halloween, that's your preschool program there, and, and of course, the children painted those boxes and made those cars themselves. Southside Elementary School, they had a little help. Southside Elementary School celebrated its annual kindness week from October sixth through ten in honor of bullying prevention week. And you can see they also had a run, a great pumpkin run on October seventh. The students got to be able to participate and have fun doing those, those activities. Southside also had a STEAM day, I believe you were there, Mr. Shields, I think. Lots of interesting things, but the gentleman on the bottom left, the students got to make a comet out of liquid nitrogen. So just lots of different things. Every time I go to a STEAM event, STEM event, I always say that wrong sometimes. Engineering, art and math events, they always do something different with robots, or they do something different with, with different things they do, but just an excellent opportunity that our gifted teachers do and all our science teachers, they do a very, very nice job. Yeah, that is our Career and Tech Center kids right there, Pennsylvania County Career Tech Center, the welding program. They recently rebuilt R T V twenty-one, which is for the Chatham Fire Department, so they actually worked on that together. And that's a special idea, we use for rush fires, rough terrain access, public events, those students actually worked on that for the Chatham Fire Department. And also at the Career and Tech Center, if you had the opportunity, there was a college and career fair, this is the second annual event that is organized by Mr. Adam Lewoff, the principal there, and that is they have colleges and they have different post-secondary individuals that are there to just show the students what opportunities they have when they leave Career and Tech Center. They will do one fall, they did it for the morning group and the afternoon group, and just the students will be able to have that opportunity to be able to see what's out there when they graduate high school. Other recognitions I'd like to mention too, and I think, back, I think I got them all. Other recognitions I want to mention is Gretna High School, G R T C took third place in the first drill meet of the season at Bassett. The Dan River Middle School cross-country team, remember, we've only had middle school sports for a little while, but this particular team undefeated season on the boy side, going eight and zero and winning the Dan River Metro Race on October sixteenth, coached by Ms. Amanda Monk, who was a former cross-country student at Dan River High School. Also, the Dan River Middle School volleyball team ended with a sixteen and one season. Their only loss was in three sets to Laurel Park. They traveled to Lynchburg, the Heart of Virginia Invitational, and won five games to win the tournament and received the pink t-shirt for their dominating performance. So just excellent job with the head coach, Ms. Samantha Morris, also from a volleyball player, and assistant coach is this Jamie Yancy. So excellent work around middle schools and they're just gonna get better as they go through into the high school and varsity sports. Students from Chatham High School, Tunstall High School, Gretna and Dan River competed in the fourth annual D C C Cyber Knights Showdown, which is two-person event in terms of captain's flag event style. So you've got a little here, there, you see Josh McKinney, he is the teacher for that program, and it helps highlight their ability to be innovative, problem solvers and be able to work with each other as a team. This past October, Beta continues to show off in lots of areas. This is Roswell Elementary School. They traveled to the Student Leadership Vin in Williamsburg, Virginia for the Virginia Beta Leadership Summit. At that summit, they qualified for three challenges, all the girls to stage, being better betas and project proposed. These students will compete later in Nationals and also Chatham Middle School also attended that event and they brought home a performance in the category of outstanding leadership, beta blitz and being better betas, and they qualified also for Nationals, which will be held in Nashville next summer. I also like to highlight, because we have some individuals from Pennsylvania County on October eighteenth, Pennsylvania County held its Hall of Fame and induct its next group. Among them were Martin Pounds, who is a teacher aide at Dan River High School, and Mr. Mark Shields, school member, was also inducted, very nice event on October eighteenth. Dan River High School has been recognized by WISE as a platinum-level school based on students' performance on the WISE test in financial literacy. They have gotten the blue award several times, but the platinum star is the highest. This is where ninety percent of students pass the certification test and average score at least eighty-five percent or higher on the WISE test. Also, Southern Pete Mont Technology Council nominated Pennsylvania County Schools and was selected as recipient of the twenty-twenty-five Innovation in Education Government or Community Outreach, and this is awarded because of our innovative use of technology promotes and enhances educational opportunities, government excellence and community outreach. We were nominated specifically for our rooftop solar initiative that combined work and innovation and so forth, I believe. We were really top contributors from Franklin County and Henry, and we were able to come on top. Accolades were to Mr. Michael Hudson, Chief Maintenance Officer on his leadership of this work. And lastly, I always like to highlight attendance. Attendance there, in October twenty-twenty-five, we are at ninety-five point three-four and to date, in October twenty-twenty-four, last year, we were at ninety-four point one-nine, so we're still trending in the right direction. And to date, we're also trending a little higher at ninety-five point seven zero. So the good work goes to our principals and our teachers, we're doing, working really hard to encourage good attendance for our students. And we have a challenge for high attendance dates, which is November twenty-fifth, which of course is right before Thanksgiving, December nineteenth, which of course is the day before Christmas, and then April third, which is the day before Easter or spring break. And you can imagine those dates tend to be a little bit lower attendance, so schools will do, work really hard to try to encourage attendance on those days because that is an accreditation matter. Just a couple of event reminders, and we can provide this to you in writing for members. G R T C competitions are upcoming at Tunstall High School on November fifteenth and Dan River High School on November twenty-second, the next two Saturdays. Super Saturday will be the STEM Academy on this Saturday from nine to twelve. American Education Week kicks off next week. STEAM days will be held at Hurt on November twenty-first, Union Hall on November twenty-four, Gretna and St. Sunny Mill on November twenty-fifth. There are several musical events that are taking place throughout the division. Ms. Carter can provide this information for you if you're interested. We also have the Chatham Christmas Parade, it's Friday, December fifth at seven o'clock with the Illumination again at six thirty. And then we have upcoming the twenty-twenty-five V S B A Annual Conference in Williamsburg, that's next week. So students that are going, I think, I think all four of you are going, make sure if you haven't turned your permission slip, I need to have that or you will not be going because I've gotta have permission slip for you parents. Just make sure I have that. We're gonna plan a leave here, be ready and be here on Tuesday at the eighteenth at two o'clock. Make sure you're ready to depart from Williamsburg. And of course, on twenty-twenty-six, V S B A Capital Conference will be held in Richmond on January twenty-sixth. I'm still waiting more information about accommodations, so when I'll get that to you. And just finally, I'll just say, I think I did click through that, I'm so sorry. Happy Thanksgiving to all our families, students and staff. Hope you get some rest and enjoy time with family.
Don't eat too much, right?
It's Thanksgiving, you should enjoy yourself soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew. Somebody speak up. Who's your teacher? Understood, thank you. No unfinished business, we'll move on to few business. Procurement, bed, custodial supplies you have at your desk, a long list of custodial supplies that, um, walking below beds. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Yes.
You also have at your list procurement beds for H V A C and wonder replacements for Chatham Elementary and Hurt Elementary. So, any discussion on any of those? Any questions?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is the revision of school board policy, H O B D, home instruction. I need to waive at the second reading and go on and approve it on the first reading. Do I have a motion to do that? Motion. Second. Any discussion on that? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
A school board reorganizational meeting, they want to have it Monday, January the fifth at five, does that serve everybody? And I think you're gonna try to get, those of us who ran and have to be sworn in at four forty-five, if she can do it. So I have a motion to approve the reorganizational meeting for Monday, January the fifth at five?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
A January twenty-twenty-six disciplinary committee meeting and membership. You want to have it first, Monday after the six o'clock, after the reorganizational meeting? On the fifth at six, it'd be Ms. Mary's chair, Mr. Moon, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Mills is all. I have a motion to approve that. So moved. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
And a membership for the budget committee coming up, I asked if Ms. Marys would chair that, Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Shields? Have a motion to approve.
May I? Back on July meeting, you had budget committee listed on there, and you, I won't keep the same committee in that past, but will that for July the first through June the thirtieth?
Yeah, but I guess I won't change it, so we're gonna change it. Yeah, because we usually do July the June, we'll be done, but I decided, I thought I wanted to change it. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Accept it. Oh, second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
January the eighth at six. Y'all got that? Anything else? Students, y'all have all your information for next week, correct? What y'all do?
We getting, we just come here, do we drive or should we have a pair of drop-offs?
Either way, whatever you prefer.
If you don't, he ought to have somebody drop y'all.
If you stay here just for a few minutes, I'll speak with each of you just for second of the best thing.
Roll call, please. I had a motion.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes. Yes.